Yeah.
Okay, so welcome, everybody. This is the April's meeting of the Sustainable Battle Commission. I'm Catherine Keever and I am chairman. And so we will do the Pledge of Allegiance real quick. For the agenda. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll put those words. Um, okay. Do we have any, no public comments? Nobody's here? No emails. Okay. So before we get started, I just want to let you know that Amanda Martinez is our new recording secretary. Now I put it in that lead and in an email. So we will see her every month and we're all excited about that. Thank you very much for agreeing to do this. We love Mary, but Mary is overwhelmed with so many committees and commissions and everything else. So this is great. We're happy to have you for sure. All right. So tonight we have a guest speaker. We have Janda Baker, who is the president of the newly formed Friends of Parks and Recreation. I once invited. Hello. I invited him here today to give a mini presentation. We talked about, him and I talked about the third space, Parloa Park, and there's opportunities for collaboration with us. So I will hand this over to you, Jan.
Awesome. Yeah, that sounds great. Let me, uh, let me share my, uh, let me share my slides here. You see, oh, no.
I love technology.
I, I, I do, at work, I do everything in Microsoft and, and now I'm in Google and I, and I can't figure out where they're sharing, uh, tabs.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. No, 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 not here.
On the bottom, do you see an arrow that's pointing up?
Oh, here we go. I got it.
Got it? All right. Yeah, between, so it was really easy. Then you have Google Meets and then Teams is like a whole other, like, brain drain.
Yeah.
Okay.
So how's, uh, how's this?
Okay, yeah, we can see it.
Do you see your presentation? Excellent.
You guys did?
Hi. Thank you. So yeah, um, I thought I would just, I put together just a couple of slides. This is kind of just like, uh, like an introduction, you know, as it, as it were, um, and just tell you kind of what, who we are and, and what we're about. So yeah, as Catherine mentioned, um, you know, the, this is a pretty newly formed group. It kind of arose out of me going to Parloa, which is a close bit, close to where I was and, and basically making a stink about like, wow, everything is like totally run down here. And, uh, and I found out that, you know, there was a lot of common sentiment there. So we got a founding board together. So there's Jan Tabacher, that's myself, Tom Borcevich, um, and Kershi Zyley, uh, formed the other members of the board and Rachel McGrath, uh, the head of Parks and Rec is, uh, is on the board ex officio. And, uh, we, we, uh, we organized formally and we got a 501(c)(3) status in the fall. So, uh, I like to think of us as a small but mighty. We've got, we've got 11 memberships so far, um, a number of people on the mailing list as well. And we've got a website and, uh, we've got a website and a Facebook page as well to, to, to reach out to people as well. You should join us. I'll, I'll send you all this presentation afterwards. You can follow our link. You can also go to friendsofbetholpnr.org and it'll take you there too. Um, okay, so kind of what are, you know, what are our activities right now? We are, you know, our mission, I should have, you know, what I, I didn't actually even put our mission statement in here, but our mission statement is to, is to support the Bethel Parks and Recreation Department, um, in, uh, in their activities. And the main way we're, we're going about doing this is, is by, uh, is basically by looking for grants and seeking grant funding. There's a lot of grants that are available to 501(c)(3)'s that aren't available to, uh, to government departments. So our first foray into grant writing actually was this spring. Uh, we sent a grant application to AARP. They have a community challenge grant where they will give you money for items that are pretty broadly specified to reduce loneliness, improve community, you know, especially improving community for people over 55. And, you know, and, uh, so we, we put in a grant for, uh, park furniture at Parloa, uh, for, to replace the, the barbecue at Macau Park, uh, to put some additional benches in Bennett Park, with an idea that, hey, this will bring people together. You know, this will allow people to enjoy the parks more. And so I'm thinking, I'm very hopeful about it. Uh, I, I think, you know, I know the library got an AARP grant, uh, I think two years ago. Um, so we'll find out in June, uh, whether we got that. The other main thrust that we're about right now is that, uh, we're putting together a survey, for how people use the parks and, and what they need, you know, to see in the parks, like what, what do we, what do they want to see going forward? And that, uh, it's a web survey that we've done with our membership. And we're about to, uh, I'm actually gonna have, uh, uh, we're gonna try and release that to the Bethel community next week. Once everyone is back from spring break and Easter vacation and, and all of that stuff. And we kind of developed that because we were, you know, we had gotten started working on grants, and realized that we didn't really have a good, uh, sense of, you know, we didn't really have any data on what people were saying, you know, what they wanted. I mean, I think, you know, me and Tom and Kershi were talking, you know, and, uh, we're talking to people we knew and gathering, you know, what they wanted, but, but there really wasn't, that wasn't formalized. So hopefully we'll have a survey, uh, that will give some, you know, handy results on, you know, what people actually, you know, what the, what the, what the actual needs are. And then there's also outreach activities. You're gonna see us at Earth Day, uh, of course, and, uh, we're also gonna have a table at, uh, at Bethel Pride. Um, and maybe a couple of other events, but, um, that's, that's not certain yet. Okay, and, um, you know, what are we, what's next? What, what do we plan to do in the future? We're gonna try to identify, uh, additional grant opportunities. Um, if there's a lot of research to be done here. And we really want these grants to, to be on, uh, to, to, to cover both parks and recreation. I think when I started this group, I think that there was a lot of enthusiasm for like, oh yes, this park needs things, this park needs thing, that park, you know, we want to put that in this park and this and that park. Um, but we're, you know, but our mandate also covers the recreational programs. And, and Bethel Rec programs are gonna become more important, uh, for kids because, most likely the Bethel Public Schools are gonna cut some extras, right? So, you know, that's gonna be, you know, like if they cut a music class, that's gonna be something that probably parents are gonna look to, to, uh, Parks and Rec to, you know, to, to try and cover that gap. So, um, so we're gonna look for grant opportunities for that and, uh, and, you know, once we've taken everything we've learned from the survey on parks, we're, we're also gonna make a survey on recreation programs and what people want to see in their rec programs. And, uh, yeah, and there's, we've also had some plans for a late, a late summer fundraiser. So we're, we're kind of trying to cook something up on that. Uh, it, we're kind of a new nonprofit, so we're trying to, we're trying to toe the line of doing something that is fun and that, you know, uh, and, and that people will want to come to, but also not totally overwhelming. And that will leave us totally burnt out. Um, I, I think earlier ideas that we'd batted around was, you know, we're gonna host the Bethel Olympics.
Oh, that could happen.
Yeah, and we discussed it a little bit and we were like, oh wait, there's like, there's like 11 of us, so. Yeah. Um, yeah, and that is, uh, kind of what I, uh, you know, that, that is, you know, a little bit of who we are and what we are doing in, in a nutshell. So, I'll, uh, I'll stop sharing here. And, um, yeah, does anyone have any questions or, or any, any ideas? I think we're really interested in, in doing some collaboration with Sustainable Bethel.
I have a couple of questions. Um, well, I guess it's not a question. I would be really interested to see what the survey results are when you have some, because we've done surveys essentially asking Bethel residents what sustainable, you know, initiatives, programs or ideas, uh, they're interested to see. And open space is always a major response. So your, your detailed information about how to use those spaces, I think would be really great to add to our database, if you can say that.
Yeah.
And I also wanted to you that Sustainable Connecticut has a community match fund, which essentially is a crowdsourcing website that they match up to like $7,000 or so dollars.
Total of 15 at the end, you have to.
Yeah. So if that's something that you'd want to look into for your fundraising later, definitely let us know. We can help you connect with them.
Yeah, I think Catherine, we were talking about that, um, months ago, actually, uh, uh, if, if it's the same grant, right? I think it was a three to one match.
Well, Gabrielle's argument is exactly the same grant. Um, initially when you and I had talked about it, I was thinking about the third space at Parloa related to, you know, pollinator pathways, a little mural, benches and, um, other thing, like a little lending, little library that, you know, so to speak. But it could be anything. It's low activation type of engagement, um, for Parloa Park. So, you know, after the improvements, you'd have to kind of find an area. I did talk to Rachel, I guess a month ago about it. There is an area, but I think, you know, we can cover another point, but there is certainly opportunities for all the parks, you know, related to that community match fund. And we are, Bethel is a registered community with a Sustainable Connecticut, and we also have our Bronx certification. So, um, you know, I, we can say, I'll send you the link and you can take a look at it. The Bethel Arts Group in, um, Bethel is their nonprofit. They took advantage of that. And they've used it for the sculpture installation, which will be unveiled on Earth Day. So they use that fundraising tool.
Whoa, the sculpture unveiling?
There's gonna be a sculpture unveiling on Earth Day. It's called, um, hang on, how it's called again? Oh my gosh.
I didn't know we lived in such a fancy place.
Cool. Oh, here it is. It's called, um, Our Power Planet. Were we close? Our Power Planet Sculpture Reflections. So the point is that, I guess, the preference that nonprofits or any single person can apply for this, it's, it's a very easy application. It's not like a state grant or, I'm assuming the grant that you're applying for is a micro grant for what you're getting, um, through AARP. Right? It's like five grand or something like that, or it's 10?
Uh, it's a, it's like a 20, 20K grant, but yeah, so it's not a micro grant, but not, uh, not that big e- either, yeah. So, uh, yeah, I'll, because I think, I think when we talked about it last, last winter, we were still just trying to like get ourselves, get ourselves organized and, you know, and, and, and bring in, bring people in. Uh, so, so now is a different occasion when we can probably look at that a little bit more.
Absolutely. So, and it can be, it doesn't, we can have multiple of, multiples of these in the town in Bethel. It just can't be the same group doing a similar thing at the same time. Actually, the art, the Bethel Arts, once they have completed their project, which will be complete in like what, another week or so, um, they kind of apply for another community match fund, but that's, would not prohibit you from doing it at the same time, because it's a separate project in Bethel. That is one of our goals is to help, you know, with resources and bringing out these little bits and pieces of money into the town of Bethel. But not only is it bringing in resources, but it's providing something that's really, uh, a part of sustainability. So what you're doing is, you know, this is, this will be a good partnership. But I wanted to bring to your attention, there's, uh, and I was gonna tell the commission under the chairman's report, then this is something you might be interested in. Apparently there's a volunteer day here at the library on the 24, 27.
I am, uh, I am aware of that. Yes, uh, we're, um, but it does, I'm gonna say there's an 80% chance that we will be there.
So that's another opportunity for you to recruit and also talk about your mission, your goals, et cetera, et cetera, engage and network with everybody else. So yeah, I was gonna, I'm planning on bringing that up to the commission as well. Um, I don't know, is there anything? I have a couple, a couple things. So have people taken the survey so far? And if so, because I know I took it.
You, you took it. Yeah, because, so, uh, yeah, we've sent the survey to, just to the Friends of, of Bethel P and R, uh, membership. And that was mostly to get like an initial idea of how, what the responses were, but also to, you know, be like, oh, people are totally misunderstanding this question and, and I gotta rewrite.
It's so, so what is your general feeling right now as far as the responses you've received?
I mean, uh, we've gotten, uh, I've gotten a lot of, a lot of people went to like, there's the kind of the free response. My wife called it the essay question, the part at the end. But a lot of people actually put in a lot of writing on that and, and gave some very thoughtful answers, um, as to, you know, as to what they would want to, you know, what they would want to see. It, it was, there was a lot of diversity in, in like what people want. So, um, hopefully with more respondents in the survey, we'll, we'll get a bit more of an idea of, you know, is seeing, we'll be able to really lump those responses into like, okay, people really want like this.
Yeah.
Definitely, you know, and, and, um, one of our activities for, uh, Earth Day, where we're gonna have a, a table and a booth, we have some easels. We're gonna set that up with two pieces of, of board and post-it notes and one board will be like, I, I love this about Bethel Parks, you know, and, and the other one will be, you know, uh, not, I hate this about Bethel Parks, but, uh, this is what I want to, this is what, this is what needs to be different. So, so it's a very kind of brainstorming, like let people write down what they want and, uh, and if that works, and, and there'll be little stickers too, where if you see a post-it note that someone already put on and you're like, oh, I totally agree with that, then you can like stick your post-it note on it. So, so the idea is to really like have, get, uh, like, open up a wide net to see where, you know, what are we gonna see?
I just have a suggestion for Earth Day itself. Make sure you think about what to do with that board if it's a windy day, because.
Yeah.
We had that happen a lot, so.
Just think about it.
Yeah. Yeah.
And were you able to find the soccer thing or the frisbee thing you mentioned?
You know what? Yeah, you know what? I did not find it, but then I reached out to Rachel McGrath and she was like, oh, we've, we have that, uh, Parks and Rec and, and we can, and, and we can lend that out, no problem.
Perfect.
So I was like, okay, that, that makes.
That works out. We'll do that.
So, on your, um, your grant, you said you'll know by June, and then is there, what, what kind of timeline is there after that?
Uh, once, once you get that, you get the, once the, they announce that you get the grant that kicks off the, the grant equivalent of the supermarket shopping challenge, you have to spend all of the money by December 15th. Um, I don't think that'll be very hard because we, what we're, we're basically looking at, um, like buying, uh, uh, park benches and picnic tables um, off of a catalog. So if, once we get the money, we just go and put in the order.
Right, right.
You know, and, and the truck will come and deliver it to, to Parks and Rec.
Right.
Yeah.
So I, I think it's nice too that you're including, um, other parks as well, you know, Macau or Bennett and, uh, what'd you say? Bennett and, uh, Macau with the barbecue, so.
Yeah, absolutely. The, the group started, yeah, it might have started with, you know, Parloa, but, but when we started up the group, we, you know, we, you know, we, we did a lot of talking about what we wanted to include and, and what shouldn't be. And, and we really wanted to include all the parks in Bethel, you know, and recreation programs. And then there was a lot of discussion too about like, oh, well, what about like hiking trails and things like that? And, and we actually left that off of our scope because we, we were like, okay, well, you know, Bethel Land Trust kind of has that covered.
Yeah.
So.
But down the road, there could be collaboration. But yeah, you're right to just focus on.
Yeah. It, it's plenty of work as it is.
I have one more. Um, I went to a luncheon today, uh, where the Federated Garden Clubs of Connecticut, new president was, um, installed into office. They have a two-year term. And each president has a, um, a project that they, uh, do over that two years. And so Macau has an oak tree that we planted two presidents ago. And that was her, her project was from Little Acorns Grow Mighty Oaks kind of thing. And that, I don't know if you know Doug Tallamy, but an oak tree supports more wildlife than any other tree.
Really?
So, yeah. And so, okay, so I digress. Um, so the president's theme this year is, um, Be Resilient Garden for Nature. And it's enhance the beauty of your community and preserve nature in a changing climate by creating small native gardens in a public location with funding from the Federated Garden Clubs of Connecticut. So they have little $500 grants, um, to install gardens that could promote sustainability. Redesign gardens for resilience and beauty, plant natives, remove invasives, rethink our lawns, conserve water and avoid pesticides, create habitats for insects, birds and other wildlife, and encourage community collaboration and education. So this is right up your alley.
Yeah, I, I think so. I, uh, there's, there's a lot of invasives that we could be removing.
Yeah, but, but this is more of, you know, like removing the invasive, but then also installing a garden that is native. And like, and this is something that, speaking of collaboration, that the Bethel Garden Club could, um, collaborate with Friends of Park and Recreation and other organizations to, uh, get this funding. And then that's kind of what the garden club is all about as well. So I'm sure that there would be, that I could persuade some, you know, uh, some people on the, in the Bethel Garden Club to, because we've always wanted to, I don't know if you know this, but the Boy Scouts in 2008, I think it was, I have to look back at my records, they installed natives in Macau Park along the walking trail. And then they got, um, enveloped by invasives and died off. And so, but the signs stayed up for a long time. So I went around and I took pictures of the signs. And they had put a lot of viburnum and red twig dogwood and all sorts of things. And so I presented this to the garden club and we just haven't had the resources to try and get a project off the ground that would reestablish some of that plant material, which is native, uh, in, in the, uh, Macau Park. And so, you know, maybe we can work together on something.
I think, uh, that, that sounds like a good, um, like a good idea. Yeah, so I'll, uh, yeah, I'll, I will, uh, we'll, we'll touch base on that afterwards.
And I, I do have all the pictures and I've actually made out a list because at one point, National Garden Clubs had grant opportunities, but we weren't ready to, because there has to be some, some base work done before a garden can be put in, in different locations in Macau Park because of the invasive and because of the predaties and, you know, a bunch of stuff. So, um, you know, so that work needs to be done before, um, you know, like the garden club, I think would be up for, if they had help planting it for funding, purchasing the plants. Um, but we can't as a group, we can't dig the holes and install them and take care of them afterwards.
So let me ask you this, um, because the, when we talk, this is really great. The Community Match Fund related to the thirst faces one project, but, and that's, we're looking at Parloa. I mean, it could be, and the reason for that was probably because it's closer downtown, it's walkable, right? So that's, it is in a neighborhood. So that's part of, you know, what, why you would do it there. But related to the gardens, um, where was I going with this? There's a reason for this. I just looked.
I don't know where you were going with, but I know BLT has, keeps working on invasives and planting natives and things like that. So whenever.
Bethel Land Trust?
Oh, okay. So whenever that sort of project happens, I know that in terms of volunteers, people are very willing to volunteer.
Yeah.
We should grab the pollinator pathway with the garden club of Bethel Land Trust at some point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so I see this as a. We have a, um, we have a butterfly garden at Parloa Park right now, the garden club does. And I, I know you had talked about the space at the end of the soccer field, so I walked that area.
Yeah, that's what Rachel was telling me.
Yeah, there is a huge colony of knotweed, Japanese knotweed there, and it's just starting out now. And if something can be done now to start to remediate that, then there could be, uh, something put in there. But I, and I also think there's, there's also some, um, some hardscape there. There's a, there's a pipe that comes up out of the ground. I don't know what it is for. And then there is a large disc with the, with the, um, I don't know if it's water or if it's a drainage thing or what it is. So, you know, you need to, you need to look at the plans in, uh, the town plans to see what those are. Because you can't put a garden right there at the end if you've got things that need to, machinery that one day might need to come in there.
I think another thing to think about for that is the maintenance, because Rachel has said to me about other projects that the Parks and Rec's maintenance crew can only do so much. So.
Yeah, you do. And that's, and, you know, when we do projects with the garden club, that's exactly what I have to know about.
So I do break in here, but I, yeah, I, I do have a, I have a hard stop, so I, I gotta drop off, but.
So what I wanted to say.
For your comments.
Hang on a second. Thank you very much. So I see this, um, as a, a really great, um, group kind of collaboration with this commission, the, the Friends of Parks and Rec and also the garden club. And we should continue this conversation on a monthly basis because we want these projects to move forward and, you know, trying to facilitate, um, to help that as a, together, not in just our little verticals. Okay? Makes sense?
Sounds good. We will continue our conversation.
Take care. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye.
Just be ready. I'm gonna put, what am I putting down? I'll put something on our agenda for next month to continue, so we can continue the conversation. It's really great.
But along those lines of where you wanted, I think you wanted to put that there is a space that's kind of over, not directly on the backside where the stream is, but kind of kitty corner to that.
Okay.
And you could start out with some shrubbery and some like base. And you could start out with some shrubbery and some like base material because of exactly what you said. Where, you know, once you establish it, you want it to be able to take care of itself and only have to go in there for a minimum amount of, um, maintenance.
So I agree.
So.
Totally. Pollinator Pathway, that, because you mentioned that, that's right. So we all kind of one conversation and project, I think, for the parks. This is good. Okay. Anything else on?
Do you know if on the Pollinator Pathway, because there's the rain garden that's at the bottom of the, um, can, can that, once it has been installed and everything, can you establish it as a Pollinator Pathway garden? You can't.
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah.
We like started the conversation with Pollinating Pathway, but we never really got to the point where we were designating actual gardens.
Location?
I could, I could. So, yeah, I think, I think you're the perfect person.
Yeah, because there are a number of, you know, pollinator gardens that.
And they are listed on the website for Pollinating Pathways.
Okay.
Yeah, because we had talked at Earth Day last year. You had kind of pointed some out to me. So I like listened to the website, but there's definitely a lot to be expanded on there, like.
Yeah. And I think the, the whole thing about the Pollinator Pathway is, is connecting spaces. Um, you know, connecting, a bee can fly three miles, but he's not gonna fly three miles to get uh, nectar or pollen if he can go a mile or he can go fifty feet, you know? Yeah.
Or butterfly.
Butterfly. And I, and I think too, like, um, we think of butterflies as being the only pollinators, but they're really not. There are like many, many different kinds of bees. There are, uh, birds are pollinators, you know? So there's, you can do a pretty broad scope of plants for a Pollinator Pathway.
Yeah, because we've been talking about, and I turned off the agenda because I didn't know where it was going, but bring it back. Pollinator Pathways and all of this. Yeah. Perfect. And, and where is the, where is the list that you put together?
So if you go to, I believe it's PollinatorPathway.org.
Okay.
They have every town in the state of Connecticut and each town that's currently participating has a link. And so we got our link established as part of our sustainable CTE certification and kind of set up the base.
Okay.
Site. But like, we don't physically change that. There's, um, Jamie, who actually lives in town, but works for Pollinator Pathway. She's been our point of contact for us. So we should probably all, well, Bethel Land Trust Garden Club have a meeting with her.
And get together. Yeah. Um, so something, and one thing people forget is that birds and insects and animals don't see boundaries. So they don't just see Connecticut. Go, oh, stop at the border, you know? So it really should be, you know, like our neighbors as well.
So who wants, do you want to set up that meeting or do you, with, um, the Pollinator Pathway people or? So you go, whoever wants to.
Yeah, let me take a look at the website first and then we can get in touch.
Okay. Okay. So the next item is consideration approval of the minutes from last month. I have a couple of changes. So Tia was here last month. I thought, Tia, weren't you here for a little bit?
No.
Tia.
I think she went to the library thing.
She was, oh, that's right. Oh, that's right. Okay. Never mind. No, you're right. So I have her under absent. You're right. You're right. She was at the, the town meeting. Right, right. No, but you're there.
I didn't read.
But Tia wasn't there. Okay. Okay. So Tia was absent. That's fine.
Okay.
And then, um, if you go to the bottom where it says Kate Hebert stated the commission will set up a meeting with Dan Carter. It's actually, it's Sunny and will say that Sunny and, she and Sunny will set it up with Dan Carter. Not the whole commission. Yeah. And then on, um, the next page is a little bit of, um, typos, um, under West Con Student Stewart Project where case sponsors met, said meet last week, it's met. Um, and then under senior homelessness, Kelly's last name is Calder Rossi. And then my last name is Hebert. There's no R.
Okay.
So there, there's, yeah, if you can correct them in all of them. And then the only other thing under the ICE recycle transfer station, if you go one, two, three, wait, one, two, three, three lines down at the end. And I said, it says, decide this business would not work. I said that right now, like right now. Instead of just that it wouldn't permanently, but right now it would work.
Okay.
Yeah. Anybody else? Okay. So, okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from last month?
With the changes?
Yeah.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes with the changes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I abstain.
Okay. Any opposed? No. Okay. So we have the chair adjourned first. So before we get started, I wanted to say something. And I want to take a moment to recognize and express my deepest appreciation for Katie Troy. I want this in the record. Katie was appointed as the Sustainable Bethel Commissioner in 2022, around the same time I joined, when it was first created. For over three years, she has been a dedicated volunteer, actively contributing her time, energy and expertise to the commission. Her impact and our success has been immeasurable and she will be deeply missed. Some of the incredible initiatives she has led and managed include revitalizing Bethel's Community Earth Day, which has grown significantly each year since 2023, both in attendance and community organization participation. Designing our official logo, which has become a cornerstone of our visual branding, used extensively across social media and beyond to align with our mission and goals. Creating and managing our social media pages, helping to amplify our reach and engagement. Introducing the concept of the Repair Cafe to the town of Bethel, an idea that has now expanded into a regional event sponsored by HRRA with Bethel proudly participating. Attending and actively contributing to every Sustainable Bethel Commission event, including Earth Day, Pride, Walk Audit and more. Offering invaluable support in ways too numerous to count. Consistently bringing insight, insightful ideas and fresh perspectives that have positively impacted our community. We are great, very grateful for everything you've done. We completely understand you need to focus on your family at this time, but your presence, dedication and contributions will be truly missed, not just by this commission, but by the town of Bethel. That said, we know this isn't goodbye forever. We look forward to staying in touch and we wish you all the best with your growing family. Congratulations. And please know you're always welcome to reach out anytime.
Thank you.
I wanted to make sure that, um, that was the record. Anybody else? Or did I just say it all?
You did.
Very well said.
Okay. Um, I saw I have more. Hang on a second. Let me, I lost my little thing here. Let's go back. Okay. All right. Um, so like I mentioned to Jan, there is a volunteer, um, day at the library on the 27th, the day after Earth Day is from two to four in the Pirloa Room. Um, at the library, um, there's tables, there's everything there for nonprofits or anybody to set up. Uh, I was asked if we wanted to do that. Um, it is, it would be an opportunity for, you know, the networking, to talk to people, to give out things, to recruit volunteers. So, um, I have not looked at my schedule, um, but it's something I, I probably will do. So if anybody else is interested, you can let me know. I won't be able to do it. Um, let's see what else can we hear? The Main Street Accelerator Program is advancing, moving along. Again, that was something that, um, we were selected by the Main Street, um, Connecticut Main Street to, um, put together, um, uh, um, something that will help small businesses boost traffic, tourism, local commerce, strengthen the business collaboration and partnership, um, and create a distinctive and memorable branding. The benefits are to increase economic development, connections, community engagement and local commerce. And from a community point of view, local pride, connectivity, civic participation, quality of life, public awareness and economic resilience. So it's that whole balancing of, um, um, economic and community development engagement, given that our town is growing. So it's, it's very necessary. The program, the project is started in January, it ends in June. There will be, uh, an event that they put on to recognize the, um, communities that have participated in this. And hopefully we, from this, whatever we, where we're going, when we put together, we, this, the group can receive a $5,000 grant, which will help with a website and outreach and everything else. So hopefully the other, in addition to if they get the $5,000 grant, they also would qualify something like this for the community management as well. So what we're doing with small businesses, um, and that's all I have myself. Is it? Anybody else? Any, any questions about any of that?
No.
Okay. All right. So let's talk about Earth Day. Coming up, 26th.
I'm not sure there's much new to say. We've been in contact with the vendors. We'll be sending out a map of the area or where everyone's gonna set up the end of this week or the beginning of next week. Um, I'll be doing just the basic Facebook posts of, I've already done one and shared it around to, about the event. And then I'll do another one the week leading up and then maybe the day or two before the event. Um, we're getting signed. So we got a big lawn sign that Power Two designed for us out on the municipal center front lawn. And then we're getting little lawn signs, ten little lawn signs to scatter around town that will be ready early next week.
Um. Yeah. Uh, so Bethel Lions Club canceled. So we will not have the sapling giveaway this Earth Day.
Did they order the saplings?
I doubt it. There's a, a death and she's just out. She canceled. So I'm not expecting anything.
Okay.
From it at all. Yeah. Um, which is, it's fine. We move on. Um, everybody else that has signed up is still scheduled to be there. So even though that's a real bummer, um, there are plenty of booths and programs and all sorts of things for people to do. Uh, the Bethel Land Trust is in fact doing a, a high schooler volunteer workday where they're going to be planting saplings at one of the properties. I believe it's Frank Reserve. Um, if not, it's Wolf's Pit. I'm not, I don't remember right now. Um, so hopefully they gather some high schoolers that are interested in doing that, uh, also happening on Earth Day. Um, all the other Bethel Land Trust information at their booth will be there. Um, yeah, so that's, and then all the other vendors are still. They're to go. We have two, maybe three food trucks signed up. So that's exciting.
Awesome.
Um, maybe three, but it's probably gonna be two. Um, you know, forms are hard sometimes. Um, that being said, we need to solidify our Sustainable Bethel Commission booth. We need another table. So I guess we could use a Parks and Rec table since BLT, since Bethel Lions Club isn't gonna use theirs. Um.
Be the tent, in case I can't find mine.
Bring your chairs. Bring your chairs. People at home, bring your chairs.
I'm probably going to be spending some time at the Bethel Garden Club as soon as the table.
You should be close to us so you can go back and forth.
The layout's done. The layout's done. I don't remember, but it's, you're, you're, you're here.
I have to update it because the Lions Club, so I'll, um.
Just check how close we are approximately.
I'll run back and we'll have, we'll be after.
Yeah, I mean, I have to split my time with a bunch of tables as well.
Land Trust and all that as well.
And, and.
Just make, we could make loops.
Yeah. The, the painting kids table is confirmed. I'm picking up a bunch of paper from Parks and Recs on Monday. Uh, we'll have an obstacle course. Jan, John confirmed, um, that sounds like soccer or some other things that, uh, must have been Carson and Rachel put out. Um, Parks and Recs will have their popcorn situation that they do. And the Bethel Community Food Pantry has donated some candies. So I have like a little sign that you can take one and that'll be on a little side table, um, near our table somewhere. Uh, or near the kids' stuff. Hopefully it's not too sunny. Um, and that's not true. I hope it's a nice sunny day.
It's supposed to be.
Yeah. Um.
In the mid sixties.
But Birds Books, it's, uh, like National and, National Independent Bookstore Day. And Birds Books has promoted the Earth Day event for us. So we're going to be promoting her little flyer. Uh, I was thinking of putting it near the bathroom because then lots of people will see it. Um, and standing around while waiting, you know, they'll be able to read it. Um.
And is she gonna have many, many copies of the Hungry Hungry Cat at the one?
Well, she won't be there. She'll be at the store. She won't be able to participate this year.
At the store.
Maybe. And yeah, oh, we have numbered lawn signs so people can find their booth easily. And let's see. Oh, I was going to say, we should probably send out another email blast uh, about the event and getting it into the update, the Friday count update. So would you wanna do?
I already texted Jan. He's gonna put it for two weeks, this Friday, next Friday.
Fantastic. So thank you for doing that.
And I also need to know, because I'd like to tell him, what time would be good for him to be on the little gazebo? What, what time?
So I was just kind of like, just kind of mucking up. I, I thought 11:15. It starts at 11. I don't know. We, he could start right away.
When does the music start?
So the music is, the first band is 11 to noon and then the second band is noon to.
So maybe do it at noon because most people will be here by noon, right? Because people have to fit in the trash ploso, right? And it's, sometimes when you have kids, you got stuff in the morning, right? And so noon is like, is, does that make sense to everybody?
It's like the middle. Yeah. Okay. I will text them. No problem. And I guess my last question, uh, other than the tent, is, oh, we are gonna help promote the food scrap program. So we'll have bins and whatever info she gave to you to promote. Um, and should, should we promote the transfer station in general as well?
I thought, yeah, I thought you, you guys were gonna work on, I gave you that. Thanks. Sorry you don't have that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can put it on, on the table right near the food scrap stuff. Yeah, because that's related to recycling. Absolutely.
What, what do you mean?
Well, I don't, I don't know what, I mean, I've compiled some information, but I don't know how the best way to convey that is.
You have information, is it in a format where it can be copied, like print, like copied or?
What information are you kind of?
Well, there were, there was some information on the, who's, what was it? The, um, the resource, the Houstonic resource. Yeah. And they had some, some little videos and things like that that showed um, how they handle the trash and how they handle recycling.
The info we have all leads to the transfer station website and their whole thing, like the QR codes are already there and the whole explanation of it. And then it links to all the other resources about the transfer stations. I don't think we need to create another resource because it's all part of the kits and part of the info that we have.
Right. Okay.
Because you, it gives like the little flyer with how to sort stuff. So I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, okay. With all the, like the bottles, the plastic, the metal, the.
Yeah, because it's on their website.
Okay.
And then for, in order to be part of the food scrap program, you need the transfer station permit. So it all links together. It all goes to everywhere. Okay.
So I sent that little, um, JPEG, I think it was, that showed, you know, I can't find it. I, I think it was a little, I, I'll look for it again. It was like a little video.
I I think it was a little, I I'll look for it again. It was like a little video. That would be, yeah, I'm sorry. But does that, then that is like, then you need electronics, so.
Oh, we don't have that.
Oh, well, no, but this is like a little flyer. It's like a little JPEG that we can make copies of. Did you know at the train, I'm just trying to be simple.
Yeah.
As as a maybe. Is that, is that information already on what what um?
No, this was a separate thing. Yeah, I don't think we should have that many printouts. It's just a waste of paper.
A waste of a tree.
That's.
I just kinda like that.
Maybe we print one and have it in one of.
That could be, maybe.
Can you do a QR code, print one?
No, you just print one and just show it, you know, maybe that's it. I don't know. Anyway, you guys can think about it. I thought it was pretty visual, you know, as far as promoting. I mean, the food scraps and what we do with the transfer station is all about recycling and that's part of sustainability, so I think it's important. A lot of people don't even know. I mean, I think, what did you tell me, Krista, how many people actually have permits?
Six percent.
Which is nothing, which is not good, so um anyway, it's an opportunity. So, okay, you guys can think about it. One makes sense, I think, if people can see it, it's big enough.
All right, well, you guys decide, and if you decide to do it, bring it on Saturday.
Yeah, that's perfectly fine.
Uh, beyond that, the stuff is there. Clarification on the Bethel Arts Exhibit. Are we doing anything for it? Are they doing something during Earth Day? Are we stopping and like having the mic have a situation with them? What is happening?
Yeah, I'm not even sure.
Like, how are they promoting? I know that they have like a there was like an article, yeah.
Saying on the day.
Yeah, I just, I wanna make sure it's not that we couldn't just do it because it's there.
Right.
But I don't want us to forget them and promoting that aspect of the day. Because it's going to be super cool.
I don't know what I did with their thing, um but there was that sheet, you know? Did print it, I don't know.
Maybe Patricia or Jan is gonna make an announcement like after.
I'm not really sure what they're doing. Let's see, I'm looking for the sheet that she gave out and sent. Which I did print somewhere. I just, while you're looking for that, I just, you know, I started kind of looking around more um about what happens to our recycled materials. And I found some interesting things. And I think I mentioned this before, glass and milk can be recycled indefinitely. Um, and and paper two or three ti- or three or four times and plastics two or three times before it starts to degrade, but starch can be added to help it break down in the landfill. So I started looking at products. And Crayola recycles their crayons and they use solar power to power their US manufacturing plants. There's a um pet toy company called Spunky Pets Clean Earth Collection. And it uses nine plastic water bottles to make a toy. Um, and then after your dog chews it up, um you can recycle it again. And it floats. And then there was a huge thing on poop bags. I was at Jax. And um one says, Earth Rated Brands says, each year our bags give more than five million pounds of plastic a second life and makes sixty-five percent um and are made from sixty-five percent certified post um consumer recycled plastic. Um, Greenbone uses um a sustainable resource or renewable resource, cornstarch, uh so that their bags are biodegradable. And Arm &amp; Hammer notes that the there's recycled content in their um in their bags. Smart Water Bottles say, recycle me, and then it says, see you again soon on it. Bluestone Perennials, their plants are grown in custom biodegradable plantable pots. I bought a pair of bamboo gardening gloves for my daughter. Um, so it was just interesting when I started looking around at, you know, like what companies are doing. I think that even five years ago, we wouldn't have seen that. So I just felt this interest.
Cool.
All right, well, I'll follow up with Janice and Patricia, but I'm sure they have a program, so we can just incorporate it.
Okay.
Remember it is.
Yeah, I just don't wanna forget about them.
No, of course not. Yeah, all right. Well, you kind of wanna direct people, uh you know, like to, oh, did you see the artwork? Did you see? Because there's several here. Yeah. You know, it's kind of cool, yeah.
The pads are gonna be. Do you know when they're installing? I think the next week or so.
Well, this week, because they're unveiling it on Earth Day and on our event.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's gonna be soon. So I think four, three, four, how many are here? And then three over there?
There's definitely two out front for sure.
She's got more, I think, she said. Well, there's two out front. There's one next to the Shakespeare Garden and uh in the library. Then there's another one. I don't know what they're gonna do with that. It's like kind of back behind where those tables are, but I don't know, it had a, it had a carousel on it. So I don't know if they're taking that off and using that. Well, the good news is they reached their fundraising goals for the community match. Yeah, more, more, more than that, yes, more than that. So that was really great. So, yeah. Did they get a lot of that when they did the Lozen Car? Yeah, that that's where they announced it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where they announced it. So that's really good.
Um, that's pretty much it. Oh, the last thing is our events, Trash Palooza and Earth Day Fair are registered with the earthday.org website. There was like a whole thing, somebody registered our event and I had to erase it because it was bringing them to a different site that we had no idea what it was.
Right.
Um, so luckily, they cleaned it up for us and we reposted the event with all the correct links and information. So I think we've gotten a couple of signups out of it, it seems like. Last I looked.
Oh, really?
I think so. There was a couple of names that had ideas where they can.
And I put it on member.
Yeah, I saw you said that. And uh we're, the one pager I've been working on is pretty much good to go. We're just trying to figure out how to print it. So that'll be available at our table. And I guess the only other thing is when I should put these out, the morning of?
Yeah, because I don't know, you know.
Because you're, Matt's gonna put out the.
We'll put the cones the night before just so nobody can park there, but I don't think those need to be out until the day, right?
Okay, so do that.
Ten, when do people show up to set up ten? It shows at eleven, right?
Yeah, I said be set up by ten thirty.
Okay.
So I want to do that. Yeah.
So when. You always get those super early birds who.
I would, I'm.
That have a gazillion things to carry.
So Rachel and JD are going to be managing Trash of Palooza starting nine, nine thirty. They're gonna start setting up for people to be there at ten so they can direct. Lee, who's on Bethel Land Trust, uh volunteered his pickup truck to pick up some of the trash, so I connected him with Rachel to make sure that they were all set. Um, so, and I know friends of Parks and Recs will also be doing Trash of Palooza, so there'll definitely be few people there. I'll just do it then and then set up the obstacle course.
Do they um sort of count how much trash they picked up?
Maybe.
Last year, we had a dumpster, and so I think that that just got taken away. I don't think we knew.
It wasn't filled, because I remember Rachel saying that it was too big. So she was gonna look into a smaller one.
The year before, I went through half the trash to pull out recycling. Or like, I kind of looked at it, yeah. Um, and I think I counted how much there was, but I can't even.
Yeah. I I'm just interested because like they go around, they go around town, right? And I, you know, walking around town, it's that kind of thing. It's amazing how much.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot. There was really a lot that typically gets pulled out of the river um by the train station. Um, like we pulled out a couch from there. There were a lot of things that people dumped.
People just dump, yeah, they don't think they're gonna find. There's, there was a bunch of stuff at um Parlowa too, in that stream that that goes along between the parking lot and the soccer field.
Isn't it the same stream, just?
Yes.
It's the same, it's just a difference.
It's just down further at the train station.
I I did that area like two years ago, I think, and it was a lot, a lot of trash, a lot of little trash.
Yeah.
It was really, really frustrating.
And I know too, like at the garden club, when we do the gazebo, when we, when we just tend the garden around the gazebo, it's amazing how much. People just like, and the kids hang out there. One time I was out there and I was like, you know, someone left a food container. It's for me. Take that with you. What else with Earth Day?
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Are we in pretty good shape?
That's pretty much it. Yeah, I think, I think as long as people show up and help out, we will be okay. So if everybody, yeah, if people could be there ten, ten thirty to help set up everything, uh that'd be great. And I'm assuming Parks and Recs staff will also be helping in the morning.
And she has the, doesn't she?
Yeah, she has like her.
She has her group, yeah, she has her group.
Okay. Yeah, that's, I think we're in it.
Okay, awesome. All right. Hey, Sunny, you have anything on the solar?
Hey, Catherine, no, not really, but I will be following up with Dan uh for the meeting setup.
So the meeting, I I wanted to meet with just you first, you know, before, get our thoughts together. That's, that was what the, I think it's next week or something. But what I was thinking, and we can talk about it at when you and I meet, was we, you already started this educational program last fall.
Yeah.
And that was great, and this is just an extension of it, that I'm looking at it that way, you know, because we want to keep the conversation going to provide information to people, you know, who would like to do this but don't know how to do this, and it's like, and and this would be really helpful to them. Reduce their utility costs. So, yeah, so I just wanted you and I to have the same conversation before we meet, we have a plan.
Yeah.
Does that, so that works for you?
Yeah, yeah, it does. It does.
You have like three solar vendors coming.
We're just providing information.
It's our job.
Okay, good, good. Anything on the West Con?
Yes, so finally heard back today, so we are officially in their system, I guess, and she said that the proposal looks great and that she will share it with uh potential graduate students that may be interested. Uh, there, she said that there's still a few of the students trying to lock in their placement, so, yeah. It, she's just been super busy with the semester, as one can imagine. And we are good to go in terms of waiting to see if people are interested to.
They'll be interested.
To figure out, to help us figure out what area.
So what what was the general summary? I know we talked about it many times, but what did you wind up, what do you want?
Right, so the the overall goal is to find the open space that would be most beneficial to the health of the region and have that designated in perpetuity for open space conservation preservation. Yes, so the graduate student from Western Connecticut State University would find a way to determine that uh based on their major or concentration.
Sustainable ecology.
Yeah, based on their their focus, and hopefully, the end result will be actual impact to the town. So that we can have that designation changed, or if needed, whatever, which one it is.
And whoever, would it be one student or a group of them that would work together as a group, a team?
I don't know.
That's great, because what they're gonna do a project, and so they can give a presentation here, they can, because he should have worked select, you know, after all that, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, and.
It'll have legs, yeah, for sure.
And we would, we would connect them with any community partner uh that has any sort of relevant information or with specific uh town boards and commissions or departments. Yeah, so.
Applied biological sciences.
Applied biological sciences.
Oh, and there is the GIS mapping of the you know, so that they can.
Yeah, I included all that.
Yeah.
I included all those links.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you know, so they have a starting point of how, you know, they can see what does the town of Bethel own? What does, you know, what does CLMP own? What does, you know, how the areas interact?
And they'll know how to use GIS.
Yeah, so it shouldn't be a problem.
Um, so they, the students who are interested will reach out to myself. I mean, they have all our emails, but Michelle's just asked if.
Yeah, you only want one contact, it's complicated, yeah.
Um, so they'll reach out and hopefully we'll hear sometime soon.
That's great. Good job, everybody. I'm excited. Yes, that's a, that's a great collaboration with the school. Awesome. Anything else, people? No? Okay.
Did you mention that I did the Walk Audit presentation last time, like since I was?
I completely forgot about that. It was on my list, but then I went flying right through it because I wanted to get to what I wanted to say every day, but go ahead. So let me just really quickly, um Gabriella gave the presentation to the Board of Select last month, right? Um, at their meeting in March, it was, they had a lot of questions, actually, some people from the audience had questions, so that really, what everybody did together and Gabriella leading it and with Kelly, that really had some great legs to that. Um, it's really gonna have impact um to the community eventually. I mean, we did from that, as we mentioned before. Dan used the information that we collected from the Walk Audit to apply for a grant, a design engineering grant uh to put together those um the, I guess, the whole design in more of an engineering type of format. Um, and then that will help them to then apply for another grant to actually do the, to implement some of these suggestions. Obviously, everything is is a process. But I think in general, and there's, there's probably some low hanging fruit there that could be implemented from, you know, some of the maintenance people and maybe a micro grant or maybe even a community match fund grant, so we'll have to see how that goes.
I think the the one exciting thing to point out is that the people that were at the presentation were Bethel residents that I had spoken to while uh engaging the community for the Walk Audit. So to see the process sort of come full circle with their involvement. Um, and having them help apply pressure to the town to have this need met, because it is something that has been of concern for that neighborhood for I, at this point, probably more than twenty years, but definitely the last ten years for sure. Um, so.
So it should, it should help really launch it, you know, like.
Keep pushing it.
I see that as what a a big part of our mission and goal is to put these together, you know, to bring collaborate and bring verticals together and put together information that the town can use to actually implement. So, you know, small towns, um just don't have a lot of resources.
Yeah.
You know, is is um what is the road that goes from that park, the ballpark to?
Old Hollyville.
Old Hollyville? That's town road, right?
Yes.
Because.
Number six is a state.
Right, I know, but I think one of the things that came out in the audit was that there was no way for like people who were there during ballgames or something like that, and you wanted to send your kids over to get something to drink or eat at Big Y or even to go to Dunkin' Donuts or something like that. There was no way to walk there, right? And if that's a town road, then, you know, that's something that maybe could, you said low hanging fruit. Maybe that's something that could be implemented sooner than going through the DOG.
That would have to be added to the whole thing, right?
So for my personal efforts in terms of helping this. So for my personal efforts in terms of helping this initiative along. I plan on presenting the walk audit again, hopefully in front of, uh, planning and zoning. For the, a board commission, I mean, commission, board. Um, and. Maybe board of finance, because you know, purse strings.
Yeah.
And I, I'm hoping public works at some point because they're the engineers.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, hopefully that will keep pushing that along. I have to check in with Dan about it because I haven't checked in with him about it. Since the presentation. Um, but yeah, hopefully we'll keep.
Yeah.
Keep it going.
Absolutely. I mean, there's, definitely has.
Yeah, I agree with the, it being a town road. Technically, the town road does have a crosswalk that does connect. The park side to the Big Y side. There just isn't. A crosswalk at the intersection of Old Hollyville and.
Right.
Yeah. So it's like you either take the non-sidewalk to get to Dunk's or you cross all the way over there. And walk up to Big Y. But it's one of those.
But then how do you get it? I mean, if you're going to Big Y, if you're going to Dunkin Donuts, you gotta get across on the other side again.
So hopefully we can pressure, we can move it along and i- it's, it's something that people desperately want, so.
Yeah, I think that area would become, you know, I think it would benefit from it in that as it becomes more walkable. Or bikeable or that kinda thing than those businesses that are around there are going to see an impact.
I mean, it's just like, if you live on the other side. To get to like Pete's or Dunkin Donuts or Big Y, I mean, if you, you should be able to just go walk across the street. Don't have to get into your car, go like this, and then, you know, it's like.
Yeah, well, those residents that came, came for the meeting, they were saying, they wouldn't even go out on the weekend because the traffic is so. So crazy, you know?
So this is, this is a good thing. This is a very good thing.
For sure.
Gabriella did a great job presenting it to the Board of Selectmen.
I think it was a big job too, to actually put it together and.
Oh, absolutely.
Participants to, to, you know, to do it.
Thanks, yes. Took a lot.
To get the data.
It took a lot of focus and effort. So, yeah, thank you. Um, that's it for me.
Okay. I'm not sure, I didn't even know with you, but okay, now it's fine. Yeah, sorry about that. I completely, it was on my list and I just. You know, got distracted by Katie. Um, but thank you for bringing it up. Okay, the last thing is, um, the US Connect, the Connecticut two fifty years celebrates. There is a meeting come, there's a meeting soon. I will know more. Where are we? We're in the middle of April, probably at the end of April. And then we, you know, you guys can start, or we all can start just putting some planning stuff together for next year.
Yeah.
Because that's gonna be very exciting.
Yeah, I know the, the Historical Society too, like the new president wants to be on the, on the company.
Absolutely, yeah, well, they need to be.
Yeah, Mary F- Mary Ferry is her name.
Uh, so the last name.
I, I am gonna let you know.
F E R R I.
Okay.
Good, good, good. There anything else? Other business? Are we done?
He, uh.
We're, we're, we're in pretty good.
I, I have. Yeah, I have a question or a thought, and please, everybody feel free to shoot it completely. Uh, you know, uh, is it, is it possible at all for us to like change the timings of these meetings? From the evenings to like, instead like sometime, that's a little earlier in the day because, you know. I don't operate too well so late at night. And, um, again, that's just me. Feel free to like completely shoot this out. Uh, but that was a thought.
So the process, we, we, is something, uh, I could put on the agenda and we could vote on.
Okay.
It would depend on everybody else, you know, but, um, do, do you have a suggested time?
I mean, anything earlier than this is kind of, I don't operate too well as it gets closer to bedtime. So that's just me. Um, so anything that's earlier in the day would be preferable. And again, we, we can vote and see, you know, what, what. If this, others also feel that way. If no one else feels that way, you know, there's not even a point to put it to vote. Um, and we can just keep doing what we're doing, no problem at all. But I thought I'd just bring it up.
Well, thank you for bringing it up. I'll put it on the agenda. And it certainly was a discussion, but Katie, do you remember at the beginning when there was a discussion? When we both were appointed about the timing? Some people wanted five, some people wanted six, some people wanted six. It was like it went back and forth and back and forth for a while. But, yeah, I mean, it's definitely something we can talk about and we can change if it makes sense to everybody.
I don't know if you're those.
No, that's right, that's. I can do six. Oh, because you could do six, okay. I'm putting it on the agenda. We're next, we don't have to talk about it now. Putting it on the agenda as, um. Consideration and approval and.
You could, yeah, yeah, alright.
Thank you. Appreciate it, yeah.
Alright, no problem. Um, thanks for bringing that up. Um, alright, so the next meeting is, um, May twenty first. Seven o'clock, sunny account, because we haven't changed yet.
No problem. I'll be there. Just a request, if it doesn't work, it's fine, yeah.
Okay, um, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
On favor?
Hi.
Bye. Thank you, everybody, Tia and Sunny. See you Saturday, the twenty sixth.
Yes, we'll be there, yeah. Alrighty, thanks.